And thirty, I'd like to call the order. The September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, Obrich Township Planning Board, Special Meeting. Please rise for the pledge, please.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite.
We have a roll call, Danny, please?
Mr. DePalma?
Here.
Mr. Lanning?
Here.
Mr. Agopian is absent, Ms. Cannon is absent, Mr. Rena is absent, Mr. Petty is absent, Ms. Missella is absent. Mr. McIsaac?
Here.
Mr. Brennan?
Yeah.
Mr. Farrar?
Yeah.
And Chairman Lawler?
Here. Okay, first thing, we'll be swearing in of our officers.
We only have one this evening? Yes. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening? It's the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. First, on the agenda, the minutes of September ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. Can I get a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Mr. DePalma?
Yes.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. McIsaac?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
And Chairman Lawler?
Yes. Okay, next on our agenda is applications. The first application is eighteen dash twenty, twenty-five P, Obrich Regency Village LLC, amended preliminary and final major site plan with C variants, represented by Mr. Kenneth Pape. Good evening.
Good evening. Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Mr. Chair, board members, board professionals, and public. My name is Kenneth Pape. I'm an attorney with Heilburn Pape, and I have the privilege and the responsibility of representing your applicant this evening. There's two applications of, by the same applicant. The first application that we'll be presenting to you is the Zaxby's Restaurant Request. If I could ask if you could confirm receipt of our legal notices and confirm the board has jurisdiction?
Yes, the board has jurisdiction here.
Okay, thank you. This is a, one of the pad sites at the Regional Shopping Center on Route nine. We're getting close to the, the end of the, the buildings. There, there's, I think, another one or maybe two more to come. This one, we're going to be asking for permission to add a drive-through facility to a restaurant. Will be within the number of drive-through restaurants that was capped in the original resolution. There's one additional building that could have a drive-through, and it will not be a restaurant, so we, we've followed that, that guidance. The presentation will be made to, by Brian Ennis, the professional engineer who prepared the plans. We also have Allison Coffin here, and Allison is prepared to do some of the variance relief. I think that the variance relief is, that both variance relief that I think is pretty much inherent in the request of the, the applicant. There's also representatives here of Zaxby's, if there's anything that needs to be answered about Zaxby's, and Rebecca Wing, who is the executive that we have been working for, for all these years, runs the project. Rebecca is sitting, sitting right behind me. So with your permission, Mr. Chair, I'd like to call Brian Ennis. Have him sworn?
Yes. Go ahead. Thank you.
His credentials have been before this board on other applications, but I think it's appropriate that they're on this evening, and then we'll go right to his testimony.
Raising your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening? It's the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you please just state your name and spell it for the record?
Brian, B-R-Y-A-N, Ennis, E-H-N-E-S.
Oh, thanks.
Thank you.
If you could take a moment to share with the board and the public your professional and educational background?
Yes, I graduated from NJIT with a bachelor's degree in civil engineering. I've been at Bowler for about fifteen years, a professional engineer. My license is in good standing for the last ten years, and I have testified in front of numerous boards throughout New Jersey, including this one here tonight.
You're accepted.
Thank you. Would you, I think, by way of an introduction, if you could identify the exhibits that you'll rely upon to make your presentation, and then do an executive overview of the requests that the applicant is making?
So the first one is pulled up on the screen here. It's an aerial exhibit. We'll call it A1. It's prepared by Bowler, dated August fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, and for reference, north is to the top of the page. This is essentially just an aerial with an outline of both the Phase One and Phase Two of the approvals we received previously, and further to the south is the shopping center that you've seen developed with the anchors of Target and ShopRite. A little bit more information, it's located at Route nine and Shoalmeister Road, block seventy-one oh one, lot one. The lot size is about forty-eight and a half acres, and it has lot frontage on Route nine as well as Shoalmeister to the north, as previously mentioned. The project follows the nineteen eighty-three Old Bridge ordinance, with governed the original Oaks at Glenwood GDP, so that's what we're, we are using for not only what was previously approved, but also this year tonight. Just high level, the surrounding uses, north Shoalmeister Road and undeveloped land beyond, east Route nine and undeveloped land beyond that, south Jake Brown Road and industrial uses, and then west, the future residential development, which I'm sure, as the board knows, is under construction as well, further to the west of the aerial. If I can refer to A2. Perfect. And this is the overall Phase One and Phase Two site plan, prepared by Bowler. It's dated August sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, with the last revision as February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Revision twenty-five, and north is to the right of the page for reference. And this essentially shows what was previously approved, also mostly constructed already, with a lot of the tenants operating, including again, Target and ShopRite, which are those two larger buildings seen to the west of the center. This was just to give the board overall context of not only the center itself, but really hone in on Building L. What you can kind of see is that little red box in the northeast corner, perfect. And that is the main part of this application this evening. It's redeveloping that from the originally approved Building L, which I'll show you in a second, to the proposed Zaxby's with drive-through. If we can refer to A4 now, or the fourth exhibit?
Just for clarification purposes, are we going to mark this A4 or A3? Because A3 would...
Let's mark it A3.
However you want to do it, I just want to make sure that we're all referencing the same thing.
Yep. Perfect. Okay, so this is a site layout plan G, exhibit prepared by Bowler, dated August fifth, two thousand and twenty-five. North is to the right of the page for reference, and essentially what you can see here is the developed piece of property. So Building L, again, is the focus of this application. This is the Zaxby's with drive-through. And high level, just to go through what we're proposing, and then show you what we proposed for Building L previously. It's a two thousand three hundred fifty-six square foot Zaxby's foot building. It's two thousand nine hundred ninety-nine square feet less than what was previously approved for Building L, with twenty-six indoor and eight outdoor seats. And just to give the board context of what was previously approved, let me just refer If we can go to A3 now, sorry, I'm bouncing around a little bit, but we'll mark this one as A4. And I can provide you with my list that I'm marking up here, just to make it a little bit easier. So this is the previously approved Building L, just to give the board some context after seeing the Zaxby's. So again, it was a sit-down restaurant, not proposed with drive-through. There were a total of forty-six spaces previously proposed, the two driveways to the south, both the most southern one and the one closer to the building. Essentially, that area was previously constructed for the pad, so the focus of what's being redeveloped is from the two areas, which is kind of like that U-shaped parking area, and to the north of that. So that Building L that was previously proposed is being brought out, and we're proposing this Zaxby's. So when we go back to that plan, you can see essentially that U shape has remained, with the parking most north of that U shape being removed at this time.
Want to get that one back up?
Let's go to A5 now, and we're going to get back on track with the numbers, so. This is a site layout exhibit, which is prepared by Bowler, dated August fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, and this is essentially a zoomed-in rendering of what was provided to the board for the formal submission. We did colorize it for presentation purposes, as well as superimpose the landscaping as well, so you can kind of see the full package of what we did in our design documents. As mentioned, it's a two thousand three hundred fifty-six square foot building. The proposed improvements do not impact any previously approved bulk variances or requirements for lot area, lot width, building height, building setbacks, things along those lines. It's not making anything worse than what was previously approved in front of this board. The existing building setback is seventy-four point three, proposed is eighty-four point four. The roadway setback, both proposed and existing, is around forty-three feet. The other drive-throughs, which was Building G, H, I, and J, those were also previously approved for twenty-five feet, just for reference of those. And Ken had mentioned, both F, G, H, and I were four drive-throughs that were previously approved. Essentially, F, not G, and then H and I have been constructed already, and you'll see if you drive past the site that G is currently unoccupied. And essentially, what we had approved previously is assuming that the four drive-through fast foods were going to go in that location, and essentially what we're doing is removing L, moving this to this location, and as Mr. Pape mentioned earlier, the ask of the board would be that we would still stick with the four drive-through fast food restaurants that were previously approved, but give the flexibility for that fifth pad to be a non-drive-through fast food, whether it be a bank or some other user that is not food-related. To give a little bit more information, the proposed improvements reduced the previously approved maximum building coverage, so it went from seventeen point oh four to fourteen point six three, and we did, as noted in the professional engineer's letter, we did increase impervious by about fifteen hundred square feet. We did coordinate specifically with that increase, and what we had done previously when we submitted the original design is we actually accounted for a little bit more flexibility in the basin. Typically, our experience with shopping centers is we'll have to add some sidewalk, or we'll have to change some pads, and eventually you're going to maybe go up or down an impervious area, so we actually did previously design the basin with a little bit more flexibility for impervious coverage, and this threshold would still be with under what the basin was previously approved for. A little bit about the operations, I know it was mentioned in the engineer's letter as well. It would be Monday to Sunday, ten thirty AM to eleven AM. The number of employees for the entire store would be around forty, with any given shift being ten to twelve. The truck for deliveries would be a WB fifty-three. It would roughly happen about two times per week. It would be scheduled off-peak, and essentially they would just pull into the area, unload, and then leave. It's typical for a use like this with a drive-through to not have a loading area designated, but we can make sure with the operator that the time makes sense, and it also doesn't impact the operations of the center. Waste is picked up two times per week, recycling is one time per week. In terms of access, and I guess just re-highlighting that U-shaped parking area to the south of where the building is proposed, that U-shaped parking area, if you drive past today, is constructed, and essentially everything from the northern of the two drive aisles, further to the north, is going to be reconstructed where Building L was previously approved for the sit-down restaurant to now be the Zaxby's restaurant. In terms of other driveways, you'll also see that there is a driveway further to the north. That was originally constructed with a trash enclosure too for Building L, and we kind of worked it into this design in terms of having a separate egress only if someone was to come around the bypass and not have to recirculate the whole site. It actually lets them out a little bit easier, and also provides a little bit easier of a time for trash and recycling to be picked up. In terms of parking, there is a loss of twenty parking spaces from where Building L was to what is being proposed for Zaxby's. So Zaxby's is proposing twenty-three standard parking spaces, two ADA compliance spaces, as well as one drive-pull-ahead space, which is essentially the westernmost space of the northern bay of parking, directly next to the ADA. And essentially what that is, you've probably seen it for a lot of drive-through restaurants, if they're getting backed up, or they need someone to pull aside and wait for their larger order, they tell them to pull to that space and not back up the queue a little bit more. Based on feedback from the user, as well as just calculating this building size with the number of spaces that would be needed, we do think this is sufficient parking, but I would like to note, as mentioned in the engineer's letter as well, when we were originally in front of the board, there was quote-unquote basement number that was approved for parking for the variant. It was eighteen hundred twenty-three. We would be looking to lower that basement to eighteen oh three, which would essentially just be focused in this specific area, which is why we're asking for the variant, one, to amend the previous resolution approval and show that now we have to have eighteen hundred and three spaces. And again, those twenty spaces are basically what's being lost in L specifically, and the demand for what would be the sit-down restaurant matches twenty less, which is the twenty-six proposed for the Zaxby's restaurant. For loading, I kind of mentioned it already, we're not actually proposing a loading space where one is required, which again was typical for the drive-through restaurants that were previously approved for F, G, H, and I. Again, it would be non-peak, deliveries would be made, truck would drop in, non-peak hours, scheduled drop, and we can certainly provide a truck turning template, which I believe was one of the comments from the engineer, to make sure that the turning movement is For traction storage, in terms of the location on-site, so that'll be to the northeast corner of the pad, you can see there's a little storage set which Zaxby's uses for equipment and things like that, as well as the trash enclosure itself, which again was previously approved and kept in the same position, and we essentially fit the Zaxby's where the Building L was going to be constructed previously. In terms of the drive-through and how that operates a little bit, there's two twelve-foot drive-through lanes. It is a double drive-through in terms of two ordering points, so you've probably seen them a lot recently. Two ordering points, you start one queue, you go to an ordering point, you combine before you get your food and pay, and essentially if you start from the first car on the western side of the building, that first car is actually at the food receipt window, the third car is at the payment window, the seventh car would be at the ordering point, and then altogether you would be able to fit fifteen cars in the queuing before you get into the drive aisle, as we show here. And again, with operations and things like that, that is sufficient for Zaxby's operations, and I would like to note that there is queuing, quote-unquote queuing, in the little U-shaped area before it would ever get into one of the main circulation aisles for the shopping center. There is one twelve-foot bypass lane that does circulate the entire drive-through, so in terms of someone either getting into the drive-through when they didn't want to, or for some reason needing to leave the drive-through, they can do that through the bypass lane. I would also like to point out a twelve-point-five-foot and thirty-foot by thirty-four-point-five-foot line busting canopy, and that is essentially shown if you go to the western, eastern side of the building. The first car you can see is just to the south of what is a shaded box there. Car two and three, from where the queue starts in terms of driving in through and circulating through the drive-through, that is called the line busting canopy, and essentially it's a covering that if for some reason orders got backed up, they could have someone actually take orders there and move the queuing a little bit faster and smoother. It's again, used to improve speed, it provides weather protection, and also is actually the clearance bar as well. Just quickly on stormwater and utilities, I kind of hit it already. We tried to make sure we kept as many of the previously installed pipes and inlets as possible. We did make some minor modifications to those, but overall, the drainage system can still operate as it was designed, with again, the flex that we put into the original design, assuming that there could be some change in impervious at some point. And the proposed site is designed in a manner that generally maintains the previously approved drainage patterns. All utilities are basically stubbed to the site as currently constructed. Again, it was basically a half-constructed pad, so all the utilities would be tied in and coordinated direct with the building, from basically that main circulation aisle just to the west of the development, and they do have a grease trap that is shown on the plant and will be permitted through the MUI. Okay, in terms of signage, and if we can refer to A6 now, I think we're back matching the numbers. There should be another sheet in there.
The significance of the signage, the significance of the signage request requires that you focus on where the building is on the site. This, this building is visible from all four sides. It's not, it's not the typical building, so the, that is primarily the basis of our requesting that the board consider additional signage because of its location on the site.
Yep.
So, I think, okay.
Yeah, so this is a reference floor, floor plan, prepared by Scott D. Margar, R.A. LLC, dated March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five, and just to orient the board, similar to what Mr. Pape was saying, so the north elevation of the building faces Shoalmeister Avenue, and I think half of it isn't showing up at the moment.
Yeah.
And I, I do apologize because the, the elevations have the wrong north, south, east, and west, so I'm going to go by number, and I'm just going to kind of go through what they're actually shown. So four is actually the area that faces towards the U-shaped parking lot, so the top left faces the U-shaped parking lot. Number three, which is labeled as a north elevation, is actually what faces Route nine. The bottom left, which is labeled as west, is actually what faces Shoalmeister, and then the south, which is one in the bottom right corner, is the drive-through that kind of faces the interior of the shopping center. So just to kind of go through very high level, and then I'm going to go through each elevation again, what was previously approved for Building L was four signs. We are proposing four here this evening. What was requested in terms of percent of store facade, which is how the area is calculated, was under the ten percent that was required for Building L previously. Our original application did show over ten percent. I believe the calculation, and it was in the engineer's letter, was eighteen. I think the calculation itself was roughly closer to twelve, but we do have an amendment that as I'm walking through the facades, we'd like to propose to get under that ten percent, but keep the four signs, so I'll kind of walk through that. And please stop me if it gets confusing with elevations, and what sign goes where, and things like that. So I'll start with the sign that we're looking to get rid of, which would be the sign that is kind of in the corner of the bottom left and the bottom right. It's actually a giant Z, so we're actually going to be proposing to remove that one, which will get us under the ten percent, and I'll kind of highlight and circulate back to the total area, so you understand where we fall with that ten percent. But essentially, we'd be showing no signage on the canopy that, or the sides of the building that have the drive-through facing the interior of the shopping center, as well as facing the Shoalmeister, which is basically where the ordering points are. So what we would be looking to propose is the front entrance, which is again, four in the top left corner, faces the U-shaped parking area. Essentially, we would be looking for the Zaxby's logo there, and I'll go through what the total numbers are. And then the Zaxby's wording is actually by definition considered a canopy sign, so even though it looks like there's two building signs there, one is a building sign, one is a canopy sign. As we move to the next elevation, which is the one facing Route nine, so we have the I heart Zax, which would be a sign that we're looking to keep, and then as well as the logo, and what we would be looking to do to the logo is add the word Zaxby's underneath it, and I can give you what this number would be in terms of area, and remove again that Z, which would get us under the ten percent and still matching either four building signs if Zaxby's, the wording was considered a sign in the logo, or three total if the Zaxby's sign and logo would be considered one sign. And again, I just wanted to take one step back to, I don't know if it was mentioned earlier, but this is going to be, or would be, the first Zaxby's in New Jersey, so just in terms of signage, I just wanted to make sure we threw that out there in terms of branding, and I'm not sure who on the board has heard of Zaxby's before, but they're a very prominent company in the south, and they're looking to make a presence and move to the north, so this would be the first one right now that's in New Jersey. So in terms of signage, how the building looks, and trying to get that brand out there, it's more important, I would say, than even like maybe some of the well-known brands. So just kind of highlighting again, those would be the signage package that we would be proposing, and then in the drive-through, there would be one final canopy sign. It would basically be hanging over one of the windows, and it would have the words, "Let's Get Saucy" above it. So that would be the last canopy sign that you would not be able to see from the street. You would basically only be able to see it if you were approaching, picking up your food at the drive, drive-through, and that would be considered a canopy sign. So I guess, real quick, just to over-highlight specifically how many signs we have in the areas, we previously had a total building sign, or fascia signs, four, which matches what Building L was proposing. Building L was under the ten percent, so originally our application came in with over ten percent. We would... came in with over 10%, we would be amending it to get rid of the big Z, and we would be adding the word Zaxby's over the logo that would be facing Route 9, and whether that is considered an extra sign or one bigger sign, I'm not exactly sure, so I'm going to call it four, just to keep the four number matching what was building L, and then also that total percentage would now be updated to go to, and let me just make sure I have that new percent.
We stayed with the number of signs that had previously been approved by the board, but we've reduced the size of those signs, it sounds like the reduction is, if you went from 18% down to 8.3%, you've reduced the size of the signs by more than 50%.
Yes, and we could certainly provide details for each of the signs in a resubmission, we just want to make sure the board was understanding that we could get underneath the 10%, which is the requirement, and also keep four overall signs, again just to be conservative rather than calling the Zaxby's and logo separate signs.
Ryan, I think you delivered an awful lot of information, I'll call it efficiently, perhaps we could ask for the board engineer to comment on what you've delivered, would that be appropriate, Mr. Chair?
Yes, you're finished with your testimony right now, right?
I think so.
Okay, we'll go to Mr. Darji.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As far as the changes the applicant's proposing, this is very common for, you know, site plans of this type and size, they get approved, there's changes that happen, tenants are different than what the applicant anticipated, so this kind of application is pretty common. The signage, the only question I have is, and I was following you for the most part, what we do need though is the final numbers, and maybe we can just-
Per sign.
Per sign, per side.
Yep.
If we can just put those on the record, because that's what we're going to compare your conformance plans to, because your, you know, the plans will be revised to correspond to what your numbers are, because the applicant has changed their signage from what was submitted, not just what was approved, but what was submitted as part of this application, this amended application, to sort of, you know, pare things down, maybe eliminate one of the variances and all that, so that's a welcome change obviously, we just want to make sure that's recorded here properly, and then it's documented in a conformance submission should the board act favorably. You know, in all the signage, and I'm sure Ms. Coffin's going to be giving some testimony, so I don't want to, you know, I want to let her earn her money, but in general, the, when you have a shopping center like this, that's where, you know, it's a four-sided building, where all the sides of the building are exposed to various, you know, drive aisles and streams of traffic, it does become important to identify the building properly, and so the way finding is easier, because you do have people that may not be familiar with the site accessing it, so there is a functional, practical reason for the relief that the applicant is seeking, and I'm sure the applicant's planner will provide that testimony earlier, I mean later on as well. The other items in our memo, from a stormwater management standpoint, I do concur with Mr. Enns, the, again, the size of the shopping center is such that the drainage system does have a little bit of a factor of safety built into it to accommodate these kind of changes, so when you do have a slight modification, you don't have to go back to the drawing board and redesign the drainage system, so our, we did go back and check the drainage calculations, and they do have enough capacity and enough slack built into the system that a change like this won't impact their stormwater management. And then the rest of the items where we asked for testimony, I believe the applicant did provide it, one of the questions, let me go back here, in the signage package there are some optional signs that are shown, I'm not a big fan of optional signs, are we proposing them or are we not proposing them?
So the package that we discussed will be what was proposed, and when we resubmit, we'll take out anything that's actually not to be used.
Okay.
That was their full package.
Right, I get it.
But we'll take out what's-
Anything optional, we're going to take out, so that it's not in our files as a possibility.
Correct.
Give me one second. The proximity of, if you can flip back to, Danny, if you could flip back to the site plan, one of our comments is regarding the proximity of your drive-through exits relative to the pull-through space and your entrance off of the drive aisle there, so the question that we have is, you know, it does become a little bit of, you know, conflicting movements going on there, do you have any thoughts on how you could control that?
We could certainly add, whether it be stop signs or stop striping a little bit more, we also did take a look at this when we did the original design, and there's a little bit of uniqueness to this drive-through too, because the pay window, or the food pickup window, right where that first car is, is actually a built-in stop, sometimes you have the window and then there's a little bit of a leeway if someone can start driving after they pick up their food, so there's a little bit built in of a stop of you're receiving your food, and literally when you start rolling forward, you're looking into oncoming traffic, so there was that, we also had the ADA spaces there and the pull-forward space, to try and reduce the turnover that isn't related to the drive-through one, and then also the ADA spaces, but we can certainly add some signage to just make sure it's crystal clear, some striping, and we wouldn't be opposed to if you think there's a different way to orient the spaces, to even shifting them all down one or something along those lines, as long as we keep the spaces, the number as it is.
Yeah, the number spaces, obviously we'd like to keep the same, if you can, we can work with you to maybe come up with some configuration, right now what I'm thinking is, I agree with you, the fact that you have a window right there means that the vehicle has to necessarily stop, they're not going to roll and just get their arm out the window, they're going to stop to get their food, so that's a good thing, yeah, well Eric might, but, but the, so they won't have a head of steam, I understand that, but maybe some sort of signage that warns of cross-traffic or something like that, just, because I know when I get my food, I'm like, all right, let me find a spot to pull over and eat, so just something to warn people that there might be cross-traffic.
Definitely, we could certainly work with your office on that.
Same thing with the pavement striping details, there are pavement striping details, that's Zaxby's specific pavement striping details that are shown in the details-
Yep.
-that aren't shown on the plan, obviously, same goes for those, as the optional signs, we have to make sure if they're on the plan, then you can have the details, but we'll take the details off if they're not proposed.
We'll update the details and make sure the labeling's clear as well of what's going on the site.
Perfect. And, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for the applicant's engineer, I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Darji. Eric, do you have any questions?
I just, the, so that U right underneath to the south of the drive aisle there, so is that meant to be the spillover for the drive-through?
Yep.
And Darji and I was talking, did the fire marshals have an opportunity to review the plan yet?
Yes, so we did receive some comments about fire striping, which we'll comply with, and also they wanted to ensure there's 20 feet around the entire building, the only area that it looked like it was a little bit less, and we could certainly provide some type of bump out, is right where the line busting canopy is, so to get clearance from that canopy to the curb, you may just see a little bit of a four-foot bump out, and then we'll stripe it accordingly, so they know it's just for fire use.
And where is that?
And that's directly next to the sign there, so if you're looking at the eastern side of the building, or just to the bottom of the building, there's basically that shaded box over car two and three from the entrance, and essentially that area, if you go from curb line to the canopy itself is 16 feet, so if we give them about three and a half to four more feet, we'll hit that 20 that the fire official's looking for.
And is that an actual curb that's going to be there, like actual curbing, or is it just?
Curbing on the drive aisle, but not within, it's all striping within the bypass.
On the, on the bottom of it, so that's actually going to be like four-inch, six-inch curbing, whatever it might be.
Yes, correct, yep.
Yeah, because I didn't see the letter from the fire marshal come through, I just wanted to make sure of that, there is going to be enough space should they need to get one of their rigs behind.
Yep, not a problem.
Are you done?
I'm good.
Okay, anybody to my left have a-
Yes.
Question?
It was already said, but for me, those two handicap parking spots have to be shifted east, because you could have someone coming out of their car and walking through that zebra stripe, the person's leaving the pickup window, and you have a two-way traffic going west to east, it's just, it's too bunched up there.
Yep.
You know what I mean, and in relation to the front doors, the front door where that second set of arrows is, right around there?
Yep.
So they have to be shifted down, so they have a little easier going straight into the building, and not to contend with someone turning in, someone coming out of the driveway, or through traffic as well.
Yep.
You know, they have to be shifted down, that's, that looks like a huge safety hazard right there for anybody that is disabled or an elderly person.
Yep, we could certainly work with the engineer to relocate those spaces.
Okay, thank you, any other questions, comments to my left?
So, the drive aisle where the trash receptacles are?
Yes.
So that looks like a one-way?
Yes.
So, if a garbage truck is a front-loading garbage truck, do they have to come the wrong way to retrieve the garbage?
Depending on what way they would be, either a front loader or back loader, would depend on how they're actually going in, but they could come, essentially it would be a trucks only, but do not enter for any cars, so anyone picking up the trash would know that they could utilize that area to get a little bit extra space and not have to circulate the entire site.
Yeah, that, it sounds good, but until there's a head-on collision or something, that, you know, that's just concerning, because it is labeled "do not enter," you have that, so, yeah, trucks only, I mean, me, you know, personally, I would, you know, contract with the company that has rear-loading garbage trucks, just for that.
Yep.
You know, I know it's hard to tell a company-
No, they could pull back.
Yeah, they could pull up and back in, they're going to do it off-hours, but it's just, you know, you're inviting an issue there, so just keep that in mind.
Definitely, thank you.
Okay, if there's no other questions from the board, I had to open up to the public, so you know hands, I close the public, thank you for your testimony.
Mr. Chair, I just have one more, so we were just discussing that U-shaped bump out, my recommendation would be how it comes down and then up over, flatten it out, just as it comes down to the bottom, just go straight across, it'll solve the problems, plus any deliveries that would potentially happen, now you're not creating an abnormal bottleneck going into that lane, right, I don't know when deliveries are happening, I'm sure it's off-hours, but still at the end of the day, it's still cutting extremely close to the building, at least this way, I know we're going to be pulling some of the, some of the green away, but at the end of the day, I think it'll be safer for the overall site.
Yeah, and the issue with that would be we would be losing a couple parking spaces, so we can certainly look at maybe trying to balance it out a little bit, but that was to keep the parking at the number we're at currently, because trying to shift that all up, we may lose a couple spaces, but we can certainly look at-
No, 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 not shift it up, shift the drive lane down.
Oh, shift the drive lane down.
Make that wider, so if it's what, so if it's right now 12 and 12, or whatever it might be, make it 12 and then 18, or whatever it is, just to allow that larger lane, and then you have more than 20 feet.
Yeah, I think what the councilman is saying is that bump out area that you were going to give the fire marshal?
Yep.
You could make it even a little bit wider, stripe it, and then it could serve as a loading zone as well for the applicant.
Great.
I think the record from Mr. DeBoma and from you, the comments are very clear, I think the appropriate response is to say that you'll address these requirements, the satisfaction of Mr. Darji.
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
And Mr. DeBoma.
Okay.
And so I was just going to go back to the signage, to just put those numbers on record, if we wanted to do that quickly.
If you'd like.
So, just to recirculate on exactly what the sizes are in each sign, so the two logos would be 24 square feet each, 24.2 to be exact, and we, we'll put this on our resubmission as well, the I-Love-Zax is 163.6 square feet, and then the Zaxby's wording would be 29 square feet, which would come to 241 square feet total, and I believe earlier I said 8.35, it's actually 8.65%, but still under the 10 and compliant with the 10% requirement, so we'll make it sure it's very clear which sign is where on the resubmission as well as update details.
With your permission, Mr. Chair-
Thank you.
I'll ask that Mr. Ennis steps down and remain available, and we'll ask Allison to join us briefly to go through planning testimony, I think all of it between Mr. Ennis and the help that we got from Mr. Darji, I think that she can say like they said, but we'll do a little more than that.
Ditto.
Please raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening, it's the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you please just state your name and spell it for the record?
Allison Coffin, C-O-F-F-I-N.
Allison, take a moment to share with the board and everyone present your education and professional background.
Sure, I have a bachelor's degree from Boston College, I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, I'm also certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners, had my license and certification for 20 years now, in that time I've appeared as an expert in front of more than 100 communities in the state, I've been here a number of times.
You're accepted.
Thank you. I think that the board is very much aware of what we're asking, the relief they're asking for the signage, if you could just take us through that.
So we're looking for relief for signage and changing the relief that was previously granted for parking, the variances that the applicant's asking are all bulk, are C variances, and there are two tests within the municipal land use law for this type of variance, the first is that C1 standard, the hardship standard, I don't think that applies here, the second is the C2 standard, and that's justified when the variance request advances the purposes of the municipal land use law, the benefits outweigh the detriments, it's my opinion that the variance relief the applicant needs tonight could be granted under the C2 standard. The variance advances the purposes of the municipal land use law. First, looking at the signage, the proposed signs are necessary for the proper identification and functioning of this fast-food restaurant, the signage provides identification of the building from the roadway and the interior drives, the menu board signage is a critical component of the use, the clearance bar signage is for safety, and many of the other signs, such as the canopy signage, provide for direction on-site, then there's a parking variance, and the proposed parking, even though it's reduced from what was previously proposed, is adequate to support the center, so in total these variances advance the municipal land use law by promoting the public safety and by supporting an appropriate use in an appropriate location, there is no detriment to the variances as they're proposed, the signage proposed is typical for a fast-food restaurant, and though the parking proposed is reduced from the previous parking approved on the site, this comes with a reduction in the size of the building and the change from a sit-down restaurant to a fast-food restaurant with drive-through, so there's also a decrease in the parking demand on the site. It's my opinion that the benefits of these variances outweigh the detriments, the benefits include providing signage that allows for the proper and safe functioning and identification of the building, and altering the parking to accommodate the modifications for this building to function as a fast-food restaurant rather than a sit-down restaurant, the variance requested will not impair the intended purpose of your master plan or zoning ordinance the used as permitted, and the ordinance that governs this site and the development of this site was from 1983, it was never intended or designed to manage or control a modern commercial center of this scope, the signage standards in the ordinance were not written for a large commercial center with multiple tenants and multiple approaches for traffic, and that the variances the applicant requesting here are necessary to provide adequate visibility and identification for this building.
I thank you. No further direct of Ms. Coffin, and she is available to the board.
Okay, thank you, do we have a planner, or?
I don't have any questions for Ms. Coffin, but I want, I do have a few things that we didn't cover as far as the variances and through Mr. Enns' testimony that maybe I should have mentioned before we let him off the hook, we do have two items, or three items that are noted on page three of five, below the, we have a chart that lays out the various relief that the applicant needs, which Ms. Enns did go through, there's also items A, B, and C below, which aren't bulk, but they're qualitative kind of items, fascia signs were limited by the ordinance to not project more than eight inches from a facade, whereas the applicant's proposing 10 inches, and again, in my opinion, that's kind of negligible, and also it goes to the same thing Ms. Coffin said earlier, which is that the ordinance from 1983 sort of at this point is a little antiquated, and there's differences in technology and materials, and even nowadays, we actually want a little bit more of like relief away from facades and things like that, so I don't have an objection to it, I just wanted to note that that's a relief the applicant does require, and also- And also, this one may be a little bit more worth talking about is the signs that extend above the, I guess, it says parapet, but in this case, there's a roof that sort of slopes away, and there's letters that are sticking vertically up. So they're not against a wall. They're actually sticking up vertically, and I think Danny's going to find that where it says Zaxby's. So in our opinion, technically, that isn't in keeping with that ordinance requirement. So that would be relief that the applicant requires as well. Maybe, I don't know if you or Ms. Enz wants to speak about that, as far as, you know, that being relief that the applicant requires.
I think that's a, that's a technical variance, but in this case, because the signage doesn't extend above the top of the roof, it doesn't really violate the purpose of that ordinance, which is to keep signs from going above the top of a building.
Yeah, and I would agree. I think typically, when that kind of control is in place with regard to signage, it's really intended so that signs don't stick up, you know, it's not a roof-mounted sign, and that's the, sort of the intent of that kind of requirement, is to keep those, you know, I don't want to name any names, but, you know, the old motels and old places where they used to have just blinking signs mounted to the roof, we're trying to avoid those kind of things. And I think that's not what the applicant's proposing. This is more of an architectural feature. It's meant to, they really complement the architecture more so than attract attention. So I would agree with that as well. And then the last thing is the logo on the speakers. Minor item, but technically, I think that becomes sort of a, it's a branding thing, I imagine. And there's no, I don't, I don't know that there was any limitation on the number of small directional kind of signs. I think that just sort of gets rolled into that branding and directional signage. And that's all I have. You guys don't have Vina here tonight, so I have to do her talking as well.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Palma, any questions, comments?
No, I don't have any.
Anybody to my left? Question, no? Okay. I don't have any either. Let me open it up to the public. Seeing no hands. Close the public. Thank you for your testimony.
Mr. Chair, that is the direct presentation of your applicant in support of the Zaxby's Restaurant with Drive-Thru Facilities. I think that the professionals and your board professionals certainly clarified their relief. We're requesting a limited variance relief, modifying the parking and limited variance relief for the necessary signage, and we'd ask the board to consider the application favorably.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, a vote in favor of this application would be granting the amended preliminary and final major site plan approval. Oh, it is on, sorry. With C variance relief. I don't have, aside from compliance, the standard conditions and compliance with the reports, I just have a couple notations as, you know, somewhat of conditions being, I heard testimony that the applicant will provide a truck-turning template for the board's engineers' review, that they are, as part of the testimony, removing the Z sign, so that they would be now under the 10% of the storefront facade, no longer needing that specific variance. And then ultimately, what was discussed at the end is that the applicant agrees to work with the board's professionals on addressing the potential, or minimizing the conflict between the drive-through and the parking area, specifically the handicapped spaces, and that they will reasonably work with our professionals to do so, based on the comments that were addressed. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sodillo. Can we get a motion to move this forward?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. McIsaac?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
And Chairman Lowry.
Yes.
Thank you all. Usually, I say goodnight here, but we've got one more show, so, thank you. We're ready to go. If you're ready, we're ready to go right into the next application with your permission. Let me say goodnight to some people who are... Permission to leave. Nice to see you. We're set. Yep, okay. You're still here, and you're still here. Our second application, same applicant, same property. This is Building L, the RWJ Barnabas Medical Building. We're asking for a minor modification of signage. We could begin again, Counselor, the legal notices that were provided in order, does the board have jurisdiction?
Yes, the board has jurisdiction.
Okay, for the record, I'm just going to announce what, this is 38-2025P, Olbridge Regency Village LLC. Amended preliminary and final site plan with C variance.
Yes, sir. And this is a request to modify the facade-mounted signage. Our client has advised us that it is important to have one additional sign added to the building. I'm going to ask if Mr. Ennis could take us to the exhibit, right to the building, right to the building, and take us right to the sign that we're asking. I think the most important information that the board can hear from you is how although there's a new sign for a very specific purpose, that we are not violating the sign requirements and sign limitations for the building.
And before you start testifying, just for record-keeping, since this is a new application, you acknowledge that you're still under oath. I don't need to be sworn in again, but just that you still remain under oath, even though now you're speaking as to this application.
Yes.
So Mr. Ennis is still under oath, and he's still a licensed engineer, and his license is still in good standing. Mr. Ennis, let's go right to that, right to that sign on the building.
Yep, so referring, and again, this is going to be a new Exhibit A1, overall signage plan prepared by Bowler dated June 25, 2025. North is to the right of the page, and essentially, we're zooming in, again, same center we were talking about, the Regency Shopping Center, to Building K, which is the multi-story medical office building. And if you want to refer now towards Exhibit A2, so essentially, what the application is, and again, Building K is a three-story building occupied by RWJ Barnabas Health, 71,400 square feet. And essentially, we're adding another sign on the western facade in the bottom right corner, which is the urgent care sign. And essentially, we're looking to go from four signs that were previously approved to five. Again, this is on the western facade, so it's facing Porta Lucca internal. It's not even facing the right-of-way. And I think it's pretty self-explanatory what this sign would be needed for. It's to get into the right door for urgent care if there is some type of medical emergency or someone in a pressured situation is looking for the right spot to go in the medical office building. So just a little bit of information on it. This will result in two facade signs on the west facade, 74.7 square feet is what's being proposed. The total would now be 339.7 square feet, because 265 square feet was previously proposed and approved with the sign that you see currently on that elevation. And again, we're going from four to five. And again, it's to improve patient care and safety by helping individuals quickly locate the correct entrance, especially during time-sensitive situations, reduce confusion and misdirection during patients, don't mistakenly go into the wrong department, support accessibility, enhance operational efficiency, and really just make it a lot easier for anyone that's utilizing that facility. And one last time, it's going from four approved signs for this building to five, two specifically on the west facade, from what was previously proposed and approved. And just to kind of bring it all full circle, 10% is also required, as mentioned earlier this evening, and we would still only be at 6% for this facade with this additional sign, so.
And that is the entire application. Mr. Ennis, as an engineer, provided it an engineer's perspective, the record wouldn't be complete if we didn't have Allison put the planner's perspective on the variance. Okay? You let me know, but we're ready to bring this...
Okay, Mr. Darshi, you're up.
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Eric? Anybody to my left?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Just for the record, the public?
Public, yep. Seeing no hands, close the public.
Allison Coffin will rejoin us. Allison Coffin, I remind you that you're under oath.
Got it.
And the record shall reflect that you're a professional planner, and I trust that your license is still in good standing.
Yes, yes, it is.
This is a request for one additional sign for a very specific purpose on the medical building. If you could take us to the necessary proofs.
Sure. Some of this may sound familiar. The variance relief that the applicant's requesting are bulk or C variances. There are two tests in the municipal land use law, the first being the C1 hardship standard, which does not apply here, and the second being the C2 standard. It's my opinion that the variances for this building can be granted under the C2 standard. The variance advances Purpose A of the municipal land use law, which is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use and development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. The purpose of the signs for this building is to provide adequate identification of the building from the adjacent roadways and the internal driveways of the center. The proposed new sign identifies the specific entrance of the urgent care in this building, which helps patients quickly and safely navigate to the appropriate building entrance for more urgent medical situations. By reducing confusion and misdirection around this building, the proposed signage advances the public safety. There's no detriment to the variance proposed. The relief is needed for the number of signs. The total area of the signs remains below the maximum signage area permitted at 6% where 10% is permitted. The new proposed sign is on the west facade, facing to the interior of the site. It's not visible from the surrounding roadways and therefore has little impact off-site. The benefits of this variance outweigh the detriments. The benefits include improvements to patient care by identifying the specific entrance for the urgent care center, allowing patients with more urgent medical situations to quickly find their entrance, improving site efficiency by allowing patients seeking that urgent care to know where to park and preventing them from using the wrong entrance, and advancing the public safety. And the variance requested would not impair the intended purpose of your master plan or development ordinance, the uses permitted. And again, we have an ordinance that governs the site that dates from 1983. It was never intended to manage or control this type of commercial center at this scope. The sign standards in that ordinance were not written with a large commercial center or multiple tenants and uses with multiple entrances in a single building in mind, and the variance the applicant is requesting is necessary to provide visibility and identification for this use.
Thank you. Nothing further on direct, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Darshi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing that I would have is that I agree with everything Ms. Coffin said with regard to the benefits of having the sign, the need for the sign, and that there are absolutely zero detriment to the proposal. The one way that maybe you can even look at it is if these words "family first," "urgent care" were up, let's say, up to top next to the other signage, other wording, we would look at it as one big facade sign, and the applicant wouldn't even be here for the variance. So by function, by necessity, obviously, it has to be where the door is for the urgent care, and that's the only reason why the applicant's here for a variance.
Okay, thank you. Anybody to my, any questions to my left? Okay. I don't have any questions myself. I'll open up to the public. Seeing no hands yet again. Thank you for your testimony.
I don't even have a summation.
So, Mr. Chairman, a vote in favor of this will be granting the amended preliminary and final site plan approval with the variance for the additional facade sign.
Thank you, Mr. Sodillo.
Aside from the standard conditions.
Okay, thank you. So we need a motion to move this forward?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mr. McIsaac?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
And Chairman Lowry.
Yes.
And, Mr. Chairman, as a courtesy to the applicant, we, I had pre-drafted a resolution memorializing and anticipating the board's approval.